Here the day after the election and we're gonna start doing some new things on here. So tonight I am with Kara Schultz. She is an elected Libertarian to the Burnsville City Council.
Yes.
And you just won reelection last night.
I did, I did.
Is this your, this is your second reelection?
So my first reelection.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So why don't you tell some, uh, everyone, everyone's very curious, what, what is it like working in a local city government? Like, you know, everyone tells us that's where we gotta start. You.
Right.
I think at one point you were one of the first ones here in our modern libertarian movement, I think, to start getting, uh, uh, higher seats, um, in city councils around the country. So, um, why don't you tell some people about what your experience has been here?
Sure. Um, so when you're, uh, working on city council, um, you're really focusing on, um, kind of three main areas and that is drink, drive and flush, right? So it is, you know, your water and, and that type of thing, you know, those types of, of services. It is my roads, right? Cause that's another thing that, uh, cities and towns are very involved in is, is managing that. And then flush, um, also includes, uh, not just the sanitation and that type of thing, but also, um, how things impact health and wellness of your community. So those are the kind of like, that's where you sit with the city council. So, you know, you're not doing a lot of decisions on, um, uh, you know, like, do we go to war or not? You know, like, that's not in your bailiwick, right?
Yep, yep. So, so you're dealing with all the things that people say, well, if we didn't have, um, taxes and we don't have this and we don't have, you know, if, if libertarians were elected, we wouldn't, you know, be able to have roads or sewers or water and things like that. So, so you as an elected Libertarian, your city has not run out of water, roads or sewage, correct?
Surprisingly, we have not. No.
Okay, okay.
No, uh, you know, and it is, so when I was first elected, um, there was kind of a, a collective, oh shit, feeling in my town because they were like, wow, she got elected because, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't supposed to be elected. You know, I was an outsider. I wasn't handpicked to be on the council. You know, I was a like, you know, one of those crazy libertarians. You know, who are just gonna, you know, dismantle everything, um, you know, burn down the library or, you know, whatever it was. And so they had, you know, I, they had kind of made me into being a boogeyman. And then they realized, wow, she's gonna be sworn in. So what does that look like?
I, I'm sorry. I didn't even have you on screen there. But just keep going.
So what, what does that even look like? Right? So what does that look like when a govern, when a libertarian governs? And over the past four years, they've seen what that looks like. They've seen when I make ethical stands on things, what my viewpoint is. I always make sure that I don't just say what my vote is. I explain why I'm voting that way. Because it's important for voters to know that because it's, you know, every day is your job interview, right? But it's also spreading the message of liberty. And so there are times when you can make an impact in your city. So, you know, we had residents that came in front of city council and they, they do so periodically and they wanted the city to, um, instead of having, you know, anyone can use whatever garbage pickup they want. They wanted the city to do one contract with one person and, and then there would only be one truck and they wouldn't hear all the trucks and all that kind of stuff. Cause they didn't like all the trucks going down the road, you know? Five or six trucks on a day. And so you can look at each moment as a time to introduce people to a different mode of thinking and, and libertarian ethics. And so since I was at the dais, I, I was able to have the conversation of saying, well, the city could do that. But then we have to decide, you know, which one it's going to be. And I also didn't want to tell them, well, you know, this is for the market to decide and blah, 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 you know, and do that argument. Because she has a problem and she wants her problem. She, she wants a solution for her problem. I need to find a solution for that problem. And so the solution, the libertarian solution for that problem is what you should do is we can help facilitate you talking to your immediate neighbors and your, your community. And you guys can get together and make a contract with one hauler and get a better price. And then you only have one truck. And you've all now voluntarily worked together and agreed upon this and worked together and did that. And now your problem solved. You got a better price. And you're doing so voluntarily and you're not involving the city with this top-down approach.
So.
And that works.
So that way you as the city aren't picking which company wins for the area. You just facilitated a sit down between a group of people who collectively agreed to sit down together with the company and negotiate their own price essentially is, is the offer you made.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So that's guiding people into thinking how, you know, libertarian ethics. Instead of right away going towards force, going towards what is mutually beneficial? Is there a way that we can voluntarily mutually beneficially work together? How does that look? How do you do that in practice? Because you can talk about how relationships should be voluntary. You can talk about how they should be mutually beneficial, all you want. But until you walk people through a real life time in their life and it works and it solves their problem, like that's when you get converts. That's when you get people who are like, ah, I got it. I understand this now.
That, that makes sense. Cause I like my services here in my neighborhood even. It's, it, it may not look like it, but I have one trash service option. I have one water service option. I have one, you know, cable provider. You know, it took many years, but a second internet provider finally moved into my neighborhood. Um, and there's usually a lot of barriers that cities or counties have in place that encourage a monopoly almost of sorts. So, one of the things I think libertarians like to do is we, it, you know, we don't want, no one, no one wants to necessarily come in and remove the government or anything like that, but we definitely want to focus on areas of harm reduction. What, what sort of things do you think that you've been able to do as a libertarian serving that has been able to reduce harm by the government in the city of Burnsville in Minnesota, especially over this last year?
Right. Well, you know, reducing a lot of the, um, really onerous regulation that has nothing to do with, with safety. Not only is it a pain in the butt, but is extremely costly. So we had rules on the books that if you were to build something, it needed to have a particular type of facing on the building or the home. And it had to be like X percentage brick and it needed to be this and it needed to be that. And it had nothing to do with safety. This was all like HGTV bullshit, right?
Yeah, to make it look pretty for.
Yeah, what it really made it look like is it made it look like dated nineteen eighties crap, but whatever, you know? So it was even like in poor taste as well. So we stripped that out. And not only can people express themselves a little more, not only do they have private property rights more strongly affirmed, they aren't having to pay an exorbitant amount of money for something that adds nothing to, to, to value. It doesn't add anything to safety. It was just someone's weird idea of what something should look like. And you know, he, here we go into trash again. We had rules that companies had to have a certain type of trash enclosure. That it had to have roof on it. It had to have these doors. You couldn't see anything. It had to be a certain size. And you get sometimes in city council, you have to wait for your moment. You have to wait for your moment so you can roll something back. And the moment came when the city realized that it couldn't comply with its own regulation on that, its own ordinance. The cost was going to be horrific. And so that opened up the door that we could look at it. And then not only was able to say, look, the costs are incredibly horrific. But I was also able to bring a study in that said, because of how we're making these structures, cause of the roof, because of the doors, that exponentially increases accidents to garbage truck persons.
Oh, wow.
And I was able to pull that study up. So we're literally maiming and killing people because we want a garbage area to look a little more pretty. And we're making these garbage areas cost anywhere from thirty to over a hundred thousand dollars more. So when you're talking about harm reduction, this is not just cost. This is like people's lives and their livelihood.
So like one business, if to, to have their dumpster out back would have to build a hundred thousand dollar enclosure.
Depending.
Wow.
I mean, these costs were crazy, you know, and for some of them, they had like the really small dumpster. So maybe it was like ten thousand to twenty thousand. But right in that median was right around like twenty to thirty thousand. And then you had larger ones that were, were nearing that hundred thousand dollar mark. That is insane.
How can a new business afford to open and do that? Like no business that's just starting up can just stay, um, I'm gonna open up, but I'm sorry, my trash can is gonna cost me thirty thousand dollars to open my business.
Right. I know it. I mean, it was just crazy. No, not Burnsville, North Carolina, Burnsville, Minnesota. We have much crappier weather than North Carolina, although today was beautiful.
I, I grew up in Minnesota. I, uh, I, uh, I, I'm in Kentucky these days. So I'm like in this mild area where it sits around a sixty, seventy degree period for a nice long time. It's almost perfect. So, I don't miss the negative sixty-three degrees.
Yeah. Oh, God, yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
So, um, but yeah, anyway, so, uh, a lot of people have been, you know, today I think is a day a lot of people are evaluating, you know, how they voted, why they voted.
Right.
I know I can see even from my website, like the, the traffic for today's search volume is much higher just coming from Google search than I think I've ever seen it. And people are just looking for, you know, they might be just finding out about libertarians for the first time today. They might be, um, you know, trying to figure out, you know, who is this person that they're gonna blame for stealing the election or giving them the election, whichever side they're on, the argument of. What, you know, what, what do you say to those new people who are just looking? Like, how do you describe libertarianism to them? If, if you could sit down in the living room of every person asking that question right now, what would you say to them?
So you have to have the conversation where people are at, not where you wish they were. So it depends on the, the person I'm speaking with. If I'm, if I'm, and I, I try to put it in language that they already use and understand. So if I am speaking to someone that, um, I, I may be rescuing from the political left, right? I'm gonna do some missionary work here, right? Save lost souls. Um, the way I'm going to phrase what libertarianism is, is I tell them that libertarianism is all about creating consent culture, but for everything, not just for sex. Every aspect of your life. It's all about consent culture. And that's what libertarianism is. And so that's instead of me saying, oh, well, it's, you know, voluntary relationships and it's mutually beneficial and we don't, you know, we're do the non-aggression principle and all that. Okay. But all of that is consent culture. But it's in their language. It's how they would describe something. It's terminology they understand. So my suggestion is when you're having conversations with people, first, listen to them. Don't talk at them. Don't try to override them, providing what they're looking for. Otherwise they wouldn't be looking, right?
That's fair.
To it.
If they were satisfied, they wouldn't be questioning where they're looking, what, what they're, what they're following. That's fair.
Absolutely. Yeah. So find out what that is. And then that's the conversation to have. Don't talk about what you wanna talk about. You talk about what they wanna talk about, what their interests are.
That's, I think that's a great point. Um, okay. Uh, and, and I think Spike did a great job of that. I know when I was with him here in Columbus, in his campaign, he just showed up at a rally and they're like, oh, do you wanna talk? He's like, no, you guys just, I wanna hear what you guys have to say. And you listened to him for about ten, fifteen minutes, had a conversation and then they, they were like, they, you know, gave him an endorsement on the spot type of thing there. But, um, you know, just, and, and he, you know, he said, sit back, listen, empathize. And, you know, frame your argument from where they are. So, and help them understand it. A lot of people I think, uh, are joining the party today. A lot of people looked at their ballots across the country and maybe said, hey, I got a libertarian on the top and it may be in one or two races. And then all these people are unopposed, you know, depending on where you are in the country. People may be considering making a run and, you know, we're right now, every day, people don't start thinking about that process or moving towards it.
Right.
A, a day closer to the election that they don't have building their own campaign.
Hey, you know what? The election for two thousand twenty-one started today.
Yes. And in some states, there may not be elections in twenty-one, twenty-two started today. For every campaign, that's a person that's.
Yeah. If you are running for a state legislature race, a statewide race or a federal race, your race started today. If you are running for a municipal race and you have elections in twenty twenty-one, your race started today. So the other ones, you do need a two-year ramp up. And for a local race, maybe you only need a one-year ramp up, but a two-year ramp up sure don't hurt.
Yep. Especially, uh, has your experience been as a libertarian when you, when you tell people that because, you know, a city council race is typically, you know, nonpartisan on the ticket, you know, people don't know what you are. But there's no way any voter doesn't ask you, you know, are you a Republican or a Democrat every single day?
Absolutely.
So what, what sort of, um, you know, people may, are, all people are, you know, learning to develop their own way of articulating their arguments. What, what sort of things do you help disarm people in that situation? You know, removing that fear and that skepticism? Because like, as you said, people, when, when they elected you, they had that, oh, what did we do moment?
I know. They probably still do it sometimes.
Well, and, and maybe that's a good thing, you know?
It is.
Sometimes when you can remind people of the, the, the harm that's not done, I think that's good. So what, what advice would you give to people considering making a run?
So if you are considering making a run, you wanna start early. A year, two years early. You definitely want to. And that doesn't mean you have to file early and that, you know, but what you wanna do is you want to start, um, researching the race that you're gonna be running. Finding out what your win number is. How much money do you need to raise to be competitive in that race? Who are the people in your community that you would want to get endorsements from that would help you? You know, so you're gonna be doing all this research and that's, that's the first thing that you're gonna be doing. And then you're gonna be assembling your team and you wanna assemble your team as quickly as you can to start working on your race. Uh, and you want your campaign manager. Yes, you want your treasurer. And both of those are not, not easy to find, right? Because I mean, if, if we were, if we were, if we had the funds to pay them, it's easier to find. If you don't have funds to, to pay a professional that has, you know, twenty years' experience, you know, then you need to look a little, little more difficult, you know? Start attending every kind of candidate training that you can do and have your entire team doing that as well. Make sure that you can allocate the time that you need to run the race. Right? If you're looking to win, you have to make sure that you can allocate that time. If your life is busy enough that you simply don't have the time, that's okay. But then you, maybe you need to reconsider what race you're running for, the timing, that kind of thing. So those are the things that you need to do at first. And then you also need to have a serious conversation with yourself about, are you willing to raise money? Are you willing to either, are you comfortable now? Or are you willing to learn to be comfortable asking people for money, just flat out asking them for donations? And are you willing to do that for about fifty to sixty percent of your time before you start door knocking? And are you willing to continue it for thirty percent of your time after you start door knocking and about the other sixty percent of your time is spent door knocking? If, if those, if those, if it's no.
Yeah. That's, that's the time commitment there for people who wanna win, especially I think on our side is, um, you, you gotta have a plan and put people into it. And I think campaign managers, um, people are like, how do I get a campaign manager? If, if you don't have the money, who's your, who's your best friend? Who's your biggest supporter that is willing to put in time? Because that's what people, if people don't necessarily have time, they may have money. If they don't have money, they may have time, you know, everyone's got different resources that they can give and learn to ask.
These people do not have to be libertarians. Your campaign team do not have to be libertarians. Your donors are not all gonna be libertarians. You have to look outside your bubble. You have to look outside your libertarian bubble. You want to find people who like you and wish you well. Okay? That's your criteria to start narrowing down your options for who can assist you. This is not, you know, your camp, campaign team members, that's not, uh, a time for purity and donations. That's not a time for ideological purity.
I think that's a, a good point that some people may fear like, I, I think inside the party, people who may not, you know, be inside the party, but what I see inside the party, people may worry about identity politics here and there on like, oh, this person, you know, believes this one thing. I don't know if I wanna be associated with that. Well, if you're trying to win a race and they're willing to help you and donate time, and that's not like something that you're arguing about every day, like,
Exactly.
Accept help when people are willing to give it and, you know, be thankful for what we have out there. Because all of us gotta help each other a little bit out in these, uh, you know, we're, we're a small party. We all have, uh, to make some sacrifices.
And the amazing part is what we see in well-run campaign teams. Oftentimes the majority of their campaign team does not start out as libertarian, but I can tell you by the end of the campaign, they're libertarians. They are libertarians. Because you, uh, it is difficult to be around a decent person that you like, right? They like you. They think you're a decent person and they are on board with you and helping you. And then they get introduced to libertarian ideas. It's hard not to absorb those.
Yep. Then I think, um, you know, almost any person who's written book, if, if you read books on libertarian ideas or any classical ones, I think one of the best advices people can give is that nobody like becomes a libertarian the moment they meet one. Well, some might, somebody like, oh, that just makes a lot of sense. And they go down the rabbit hole. But it, it, it usually takes, you know, looking at the idea, learning that you have to look at both sides of an argument or multiple sides, you know? Evaluating your own argument and saying, do I, am I contradicting myself in it? You know, and it, it, the, I, your own ideas are gonna continue changing. No one has a like pure idea of what it is to be a libertarian that I've ever met. So.
And if, if you want to convince people about libertarianism, the very best thing that you can do to convince them is to be a decent, trustworthy human being. It is really hard if someone is a decent, trustworthy human being to say, oh, nope, they're full of shit and I don't believe anything they say. If they trust you and they think you are a person worthy of respect, they're gonna start to think in their mind, there's gotta be something to this. There's gotta be something to this. Hmm. Well, that actually makes sense. Well, I actually like that too. So, yeah. I, lead by example. Lead through your life.
I think that's great advice for everyone and everything we do, not even in just politics, but you know, throughout, you know, how we interact with people in comment sections sometimes can be, you know? I mean, you know, sometimes memes are fun, but sometimes, you know, giving some, explaining some of the ideas or why we believe it helps as well. So. Let's see here. Any questions? So, yep. So, uh, people are saying twenty twenty-two started today. Yes, we need to file. Um, so Ken here jumped in, said, many old party candidates that run do so for power and control need to run with the same passion to stop them. And I, I, I think we do. I think, um, there's a lot of resources out there. I, I know the LP has, uh, some, the, a workbook for candidates to get started with some advice on how to start building it out. So I think those are some good resources. You mentioned candidate camps for people to look into.
Yeah.
Um, I think Secretary of State websites, usually election websites, even usually like step by step, how to go through your process.
You know, and Leadership Institute does really good candidate training. We take a hiatus until, uh, January, but at that point it starts up again. And we do the every other week candidate training call. And so I do that. Um, we keep it down to twenty minutes. Every other week, um, we keep it to twenty minutes because we know that campaign teams are busy. And so we have an expert present on a specific topic of how to do it for campaigning. Um, and then we load those to YouTube. So there is a whole bunch of videos that people can refer to. That has these little, you know, twenty minute, and it's usually fifteen minutes of presentation and five minutes of Q and A. So that people can jump on and, and ask, ask questions and that kind of thing. So we are starting to get a lot of resources out there for libertarian candidates. Um, also I have candidates call me all the time. And they have questions over something specific. And if I don't know it, I probably know someone who can help them with what they're looking for and I can connect them. So.
Well, that's good. And I, I, that's one thing I've seen really well in this whole community and, you know, talking to different campaigns throughout this whole last year. There's a lot of mutual assistance that goes on, you know, most, someone knows someone in a lot of the campaigns and it's, you know, hey, we need something to do this. And people pick up phones and, you know, that, it, you know, it can make things happen. So networking is important too. In general, just knowing who, uh,
Very.
who can help you and being willing to ask for help, I would say. So let's see here. Uh, someone said, uh, best advice I got starting as a candidate. Step one, read to the candidate handbook. Step two, read it again. Well, I, I know you've been, uh, talking, uh, about all the different, uh, you know, candidates tonight. What, um, what do you think has been the trend with people who were the most successful that you've had conversations with this year? What, what sort of things do you think worked well? What sort of things didn't work well at different levels?
You know, they didn't jump into it in the last minute. Um, some of them, they were working towards this election years before they ever filed. They were involved in their community. They were on some type of city planning board or that type of thing. They were at community events. They were well-known in their community. And by well-known, I don't mean like that they were richer, wealthier, or had, you know, some type of prestige job or something like that. I, I mean, when you go to the, you know, the holiday tree lighting, they're going to be there. They'll be in the audience. They'll be walking around. But I mean, you know, you're constantly bumping into them. They're involved in like the chamber and, they're involved in the food pantry and, you know, different things like that. So, uh, be involved and be known in your community and be trustworthy in your community. If you say you will assist with something, do it and do it to the best of your ability. Be that person that's known as a doer, someone that's reliable. That is something that we are seeing candidates who are winning, they all have in common. They're very active and engaged in their community and have been for years. The other thing is, yeah, show up to your local civic organization meetings. Absolutely. You know, if you are a religious person, you know, attend your religious services, you know? Write letters to the editor. Yeah, absolutely. So I mean, there's, there's different things. But the other thing that they all have in common was they put together a multifaceted campaign plan. And then they meticulously executed it over a long period of time. And that means doing things that are grinding, like just physically grinding, like knocking on doors. Thousands of doors, knocking on doors. And when the weather's crappy, they're knocking on doors. And whether weather is fantastic and they would rather be at the beach, they are knocking on doors. They are texting thirty thousand people. They are, you know, so they are meticulously doing the activities that you need to do, executing their plan and they do them. So they don't, they don't go, oh, shiny, right? And then off onto something else. They understand that it's a grind and they have to be fresh as a daisy on the last day that they're grinding away is on the first day when they started.
Yep. Okay. Um, well, I, uh, I know I've gotta get going here for another meeting here tonight myself. So I do appreciate you coming on tonight, Kara.
Absolutely.
Do you have any last minute things you'd like to tell everyone out there, uh, watching? I know, you know, the country's kind of in this waiting to see which side of the teeter totter is gonna come down on the authoritarian party.
Right.
So, um, any, any advice to people out there and, uh, you know, how, how the election's currently going and moving forward?
You know, I, I would tell people, um, focus on your relationships with other people. Uh, there will be kings that come and go. I mean, that's just how it is in this country. You know, whichever ruler is, you know, sitting in, in the hot seat at the moment. For the most part, doesn't have a lot of impact on your daily life. So, you know, focus on building your relationships around you. you know, focus on building your relationships around you, um, both within your party, in your community. That's, that's what I would put my energy towards, something something positive that you can, you can work towards. And I would also like to let libertarians know we have such incredible things happening right now, like exciting, amazing, incredible things. I mean, some of these libertarians that just got elected, they are in cities of a hundred thousand, a hundred ninety thousand. I mean, big metropolitan areas and they are winning. And, you know, we have, we have, um, libertarians that are doing amazing messaging and in their small town. They are winning, even though it's nonpartisan. They are doing so with an unapologetically libertarian message. I'm not talking edgelord message. I'm talking unapologetically libertarian message and being very forthright and bringing people into the party. So I mean, what we're seeing for candidates and how they are acting and interacting and the campaign teams and just the level of everything. I mean, I am beyond excited. So I I have not been to sleep yet, so I might be a little delirious. But election night was amazing and seeing them win and watching how their campaigns have been, you know, through this past year. It's fricking brilliant. And what they're going to be able to do in office is going to be incredible. And they're going to bring more people to the party every day they're in office.
I I've I've been talking to people I know working in different campaigns and, you know, today's kind of just been like, I I know everyone's kind of been in a it's, it 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 ended yesterday. So I started messaging people and like, so you bored yet? Like, you know, like everyone's been busting, you know, going, going, going every single day. And it's like, so what what do we do now? Like, all right, well, that's right. Let's get the campaigns going again. So, um, obviously, I'm assuming you'll be running for reelection as well.
Yeah, four years. I got four years.
Four years? Okay. Well, I mean, essentially, your campaign starts today too. So, um,
All the time.
That's right. That's right. So Kara, thank you. I really appreciate it. And I look forward to talking to you some more, uh, another day. So
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye.